The Lewisburg area Board of
Okay.
Of school directors. If you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So I'm just getting situated and pulling up my notes. Just a couple of quick announcements. The board is meeting virtually this evening. We have all board members meeting via Zoom and then we have the administrators there in person. Just to catch anybody who might join the meeting in person since we had originally planned to do so in person as well. We did move tonight's meeting to Zoom just to avoid having to cancel it due to several board members needing to meet virtually. So we're all virtually tonight. With the exception of Director Rowe and Director Clark, they are excused. Mr. Rowe has a work obligation. Mrs. Clark is out of town this evening. The next announcement, the board did meet an executive session for approximately 15 minutes prior to this evening's meeting to discuss a revised personnel report and also a legal matter update. And I believe that's all of the announcements, so we'll move on. John, are there any comments to the board on agenda items?
We'll take a look here. Nope, not currently for anybody online. If you'd like to make a comment to the board this evening, please visit our website at www.lasd.us. Scroll down, click the survey link, enter your name, address, and a comment for the board, and it'll be read later on in the meeting. Back to you, Mr. Fetter.
All right, we'll move on to select presentations and I will turn it over to the Budget 2021-22 Update. The impacts of the 2021-22 state budget, sorry.
Okay. So just a quick summary here this evening, and this is posted for the public on the website too, so you can take a look as we go along. We passed our budget in early June. The state finally got around to it just before the deadline of June 30th, so they did actually do their jobs this year. Of the $40 billion Commonwealth budget, we take a quick look at what comes to Lewisburg. There are three categories, the largest being basic education funding, followed by special ed, and the ARP-ESR set-asides. That's ESAR round three. So what did we budget for basic education funding? About 3.9 million with a conservative 2% increase over last year's budget. This represents about 10% of our total budget. So what did the Commonwealth allocate for us? The original estimate was about 3.8 million and the additional 200 million that the legislature allocated brings us up to about 3.9 million. So it's about 15,000 more than our budgeted estimate, so we came in pretty close to what they were going to give us. So I'd say that's pretty good. Special education funding, we budgeted our standard 1.1 million because in previous years we had not seen an increase. So I like to keep that flat. The state did bump us up a little bit with a share of a $47 million increase. So it's about 55,000 more than our budgeted estimate. However, based on the metrics that they use to calculate your special education funding, some of that data will not be updated until later on this year. So technically, we won't know our actual allocation until May of 2022, when the year is almost over. So we'll see if the estimates hold true. And finally, as part of the ARP-ESR funding from the feds, there were some set-asides required by the federal government. And so Pennsylvania set aside, as you can see, 115,000 for learning loss and 23,000 apiece for summer enrichment and after-school programs. Now, bear in mind, this 162,000 is on top of the 400,000 in our ARP-ESR funds, of which basically 20% of our ESAR funding that we must spend on learning loss. So we will be doing our best to find ways to spend that money to address any learning loss that may have occurred. And there are further requirements for our ESAR funds here. Of the 116,000 for learning loss, we have to target 30% on social, emotional, and mental health needs. We have to target 10% on professional development of staff to target those social, emotional, and mental health needs. And at least 8% has to be targeted at reading remediation and improvement. And we must complete the PDE form for submitting our plan, including a description of activities, programs, expected outcomes, and a detailed budget. And in case anybody on the board is wondering, you can guess that most of these fundings and programs were targeted at the roughly 80% of school districts in Pennsylvania that were not open for in-person learning. And so maybe facing greater learning loss or other needs than we were since we were in person from 85 to 90% of the time last year. So in summary, our basic education funding came in pretty close to the estimates. Special education came in a little higher, but again, that's still not firmed up. And we do have some additional ARP-ESR set-asides, but again, they're very narrow usages. And as I said, they're primarily designed for districts that were either all virtual or remote last year. So our learning loss is much lower. And with that, we can entertain any questions. All right.
Thanks, John. We'll move right into our board action. Being our July meeting, as we all know, the building-level principals are all excused from this meeting. So we don't have that section to do tonight, so we'll get right into the action items. The first item is the 2021-22 Health and Safety Plan. Dr. Polachuk?
Okay. So the requirements for schools going into the 21-22 school year is to develop another health and safety plan. This is a bridged version of the plan that we had to submit last year. The emphasis is really on moving towards in-person instruction. And as John has just said, we did have in-person instruction for a majority of the school year. So I'm certain that plans for schools that remained virtual throughout last year, they would look much different than what ours looks like here. It does need to be submitted to the Department of Education July 30th. So that's why it's being presented to you tonight. What's significant in the three areas? John, if you could just pull it up and kind of scroll.
Sure.
There are. I would say, John, on page two. We have to address these eight or nine areas specifically in the plan.
Sorry, we're pulling it up here. There we go.
Yeah, page two.
Yep.
Scroll down, right above that, yeah, right there. So these are the areas we really need to address in the plan. Now, the CDC did release guidance on July 9th for what schools would need to do. We were already working on this plan and we revised the plan. The administration team did review this draft prior to its posting. So we're looking at masks, physical distancing, handwashing, and respiratory etiquette cleaning, ventilation, contact tracing, isolation quarantine, diagnostics, vaccination to school, efforts for vaccinations to school communities, and appropriate accommodations for children with disabilities, and coordination with state and local health officials. In a meeting that I had today with an individual from the Department of Health and their epidemiology team, the Department of Health and the Department of Education are really working together to streamline their communications and provide the same guidance to schools so that they're not in opposition with one another. As of right now, the Departments of Ed and Health have not issued any additional guidance beyond what the CDC guidance is. That doesn't mean that they may not come back with something depending on how conditions are across the Commonwealth. Most notable in this plan is the wearing of masks for students and staff that are unvaccinated. The CDC is recommending that masks are still worn by unvaccinated individuals. We know that children 11 and under are not yet eligible for vaccination. The estimation with the clinical trials right now for vaccinations for students six and up is slated to be completed by the end of September. Possibly without emergency authorization, we would just be looking, you know, into probably mid-November by the time students would be able to get that vaccination. So we feel for the health and safety of the students that it would be in their best interest and in our best interest to ask them to remain masked until they have the opportunity to be vaccinated. When it comes to being outdoors, nobody would need to wear masks. The only really odd thing I would say in the plan is the inclusion of the federal order where on any commercial transit that occurs across the country that we still need to wear masks regardless of vaccination status. That's a federal order, something similar to what you might experience on a train or a plane. And that isn't something that we could deviate from. So all students will have to wear masks when they're on buses until that order is lifted. And once that is lifted, then again, it would just be the unvaccinated individuals who would have that. In terms of testing, there's a few different protocols that they're looking for. And what the Department of Health has been communicating is to have a response that's geared towards what's in the community as opposed to a statewide or regional set of guidance, which is refreshing to us to hear because different communities have a different experience than what you might see in a rural area to an urban area. So there is funding for testing. It's unclear whether anything would be mandated. The plan reflects that we would work with the Department of Health, Department of Ed, as well as their local health experts on what would be the best course of action should there become an outbreak or there be a need to do so. We just don't have some of that information yet because they're still developing that. And the plan has to be reviewed within six months, but should something come out that is important to us, we would go ahead and review and revise this plan sooner. But that's pretty much the status of where we are here, July 15th. We'll see if anything additional comes from there. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
My only question, I don't think it's addressed explicitly, is the non-re requirement for masks for vaccinated individuals. Is that still the honor system?
Yes, so the only database that exists where we would know for students is the statewide. It has a specific name, I could get that for you. There's a statewide database that has vaccinations in it. According to the individual from the Department of Health that I spoke with today, not all vaccines, like your routine childhood vaccines, are recorded in that. However, the Department of Health has required that all COVID vaccines be recorded in there. It's called the Pennsylvania Statewide Immunization Information System. School nurses would have access to that, so they will be able to know for the students who is vaccinated and who is not. We are asking our staff to volunteer that information to us because for any leave that they may need to have, it would behoove them to be truthful about whether or not they've received vaccinations. I want to say that with the effort with the CSIU this past February, March, we, the majority of our staff, and even beyond independently, have received their vaccinations. What's unclear still, and that just isn't clear yet from the CDC, is whether or not boosters would be required and by whom and when they should get that. So we'll continue to support staff and students should that be a need sometime in the future to make sure that they are fully vaccinated and protected from the virus.
Jen, is there a reason why instead of requiring the masking, that we just don't strongly recommend it like the CDC is so that we're actually not playing mask police this year?
Right. I think what'll happen is kind of the reverse with the mask police. If parents are sending their kids in with masks and expecting them to wear masks, then even if it's communicated to the teacher and the child doesn't want to wear the mask because there's other kids not wearing masks, and this is for the younger kids. I mean, once, let's say, vaccinations start, it's going to be harder to control that. I think just given also too, and it's an excellent point, it really is, because it's strongly recommended. It leaves it as a choice to individuals as to whether or not to do that. And we know that our kids under 12 definitely aren't vaccinated. So they're the safest population to say, let's make sure that they're protected and that there isn't any transmission or opportunity for illness. Or really, any illness, to tell you the truth, we've noticed that nobody got sick in any way, shape, or form while we were wearing masks. But I think it'll be harder. We have parents who are going to be, many parents returning from e-school, but certainly 24 families returning from our cyber charter schools, as well as eight from our non-traditional homeschool. And, you know, we know we have the best environment for teaching the children. And that may be a decision point that happens for some of these families if they know that we're not requiring masks until the vaccination.
I was actually contacted by some families that were on the other end of that and said that if we require masks, that's a decision point for them. So I understand there's all sides to this argument. I guess my point was trying to extract the district from that position. I understand parents want what they want regardless of what their viewpoint is. And that's always going to be the case and always has been the case. But I think especially for kids at that age, because my understanding from everything we were told was that the kids in those age groups really experienced, it really wasn't a big deal for them. They didn't mind wearing the mask from all accounts that I heard from teachers and from even parents and kids and parents outside of the school district, that the kids just adapted because that's what they do when they're that young. So I guess my thought was is that even without mandating it, that we could still, if we strongly encouraged it, the kids are going to probably do it anyway. I can't imagine there's that many 10- or 11-year-olds that are going to really take a hard stand and go against what, you know, 98% of people are doing or what everybody else is doing in the classroom. I'm not trying to say that we shouldn't. It's not that I don't want them to wear masks. I would just really like to have us out of the business of telling them they have to.
Yeah.
And I'm not even suggesting that we should be necessarily running around and trying to figure out what each person needs. See the wishes of a parent. I think we just say, just like every other personal family decision that has gone on since the beginning of time with schools, parents send their kids to schools with certain expectations. They don't like what they're going to eat or what they're going to, you know, things like that. They don't necessarily, short of a medical, you know, some life-threatening allergy or something, necessarily expect the school to make sure that, you know, little Susie doesn't eat a strawberry or some other, whatever other piece of food that the family doesn't believe in, you know, those kinds of things. And I don't know, I guess I'm just trying to satisfy all sides a little bit, and that's probably not possible. But I would, I would really rather not be requiring the mask. At the same time, strongly encouraging it and thinking that we probably get the mission accomplished anyway just because of the age group that's involved.
Yeah, it's, in some respects, it was refreshing to see it's recommending rather than requiring. But I think it still puts schools in the very gray area of then having to respond to what the community would be best for the community as well as what the community could tolerate. And, you know, one thing we're looking at is that it's not for the entire year. It's likely the first marking period where we would be where most, all the students that would be able to get the vaccine. Of course, there's going to be kids that, for whom they can't because there's an allergy or something along those lines, and their doctors would advise against it as they would with other vaccines as well. And we'll honor that. We won't require those students to wear masks for all times because we don't do that currently with measles or any of the other childhood immunizations that they receive. You know, in looking at this and talking it over with the administrative team, we feel like it's just the safer route to go. We don't want to be the place where people are feeling uncomfortable or unsafe. I mean, the masks certainly don't add to anybody's comfort, but as you said, the kids are fairly compliant. They go along with it. It's not for a long time. They don't have to wear them outside. Everything else in school pretty much returns back to normal. Everybody, of course, on a bus or taking our buses to and from school will have to have a mask on them because they'll have to wear the mask on the bus. I think that's where we're going to have more concern for policing because we'll have unvaccinated and now high school, middle school students to deal with and trying to get them to understand that. But this is where we are right now on the 15th of July. Like, if this proves to be how it was last summer, things can change through the Department of Health or Department of Ed or CDC even updating its guidance. So much depends on just where we are as a nation and what they're recommending. I'm happy that we haven't yet done what California did where everybody is required to wear masks in school regardless of vaccination status. So I'm happy we haven't taken that stance yet in Pennsylvania, and hopefully we don't.
No, I mean, I would agree with you, but I think that, at least from my viewpoint, you know, we took that stance last year largely because it wasn't our stance. It was what we were told we had to do. And this year, at least as yet, other than for the busing piece, we haven't been told we have to do that. So I guess that was where I was coming from. It feels, by mandating, it feels like we're going above and beyond what's actually required. And I think there will be backlash because of that.
Well, I also think too, with this new variant, I have a feeling that we might be required to wear a mask down the road. Because even if you're vaccinated, they're saying you can still get it.
So before we get too much deliberation, just following our standard board procedures, you know, any other questions or anything for Jen? Before we deliberate, we would have to do a motion of second, you know, to get into too much discussion. Moved by Dr. Bonzby.
Second.
Seconded by, I think, Dr. Zimmerman and maybe someone else. It's a little harder doing this via Zoom, so there's sometimes some echoes. So I apologize if I'm getting anyone wrong. So now we have a motion of second. Sorry to be the stickler for the rules, but I just wanted to make sure we got that out of the way before we really started to discuss. So now, any discussion?
I have a question. And maybe this was mentioned and I just glazed over it, but with the elementary kids not being vaccinated, teachers will be requested, required, what's the status on the teachers that are vaccinated in those buildings?
So the teachers would not because anybody who is vaccinated would not. My plan is whenever I'm in the elementary schools interacting with the kids, I'll still wear a mask because I'm asking the kids to wear a mask for their safety. And it's not, nobody wants to. It's not the best, most comfortable thing, especially considering it could be warm when school starts back up. But if it's something that I would ask them to do, then I would want to model that. I won't ask that of the teachers and staff, but I suspect that we'll have some people that will follow suit.
All right, any other?
I just wanted to say I support the plan as written. I totally agree with Mary's observation. And we can look around the country at the examples, right? The experiment has been done where kids are unmasked. It doesn't go well. And we already did the experiment where the kids were masked and it went very well. And I think we can be a model for continuing to stay in person the vast majority of the time.
Any other discussion? All right. Sorry, I know some extra long pauses, but I just want to make sure I'm not skipping over anyone just because of a delay. So hearing no other discussion, then Paula, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzicker Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
No.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll move on to our next item, the instructional time template. Dr. Polachuk?
Similar to last year, we have to also submit an instructional time template. This hasn't really received a lot of media fanfare, let's say. This is just what we would do in the event of having to shift our mode of instruction to ensure that we're providing 180 days of instruction and the required number of hours. What we simply did was list our beginning and ending date, 180 days, and some subtle revisions to our remote plan. We still are offering e-school as an option for our students K to 12 and the change of the provider for our secondary to ingenuity. And our schedules would be included here if we do find ourselves having to go to remote. We had a compressed schedule in all of the schools to eliminate some of that transition time because that really wouldn't be necessary in a remote environment. So that will be submitted with the plan as well. And that remote schedule would be exactly the same as it was this past year.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Mrs. Brousse. Any discussion? Hearing none. Paula, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Unzicker Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
All right, the next item is the replacement of the maintenance truck. Dr. Fairchild?
Yes, it's everybody's favorite time of, let's take a look at the oldest vehicle in the district. So you have before you the beast, the 1995 Ford F-350 here that unfortunately is 26 years old and is not doing so well anymore. He's left Bill Sid a couple of times. So we would ask that you approve the quote, the Co-Stars quote from Sunbury Motors this evening for a nice 2022 Ford. And just as an FYI, this utility bed that was added to the truck back in 2018, that will be moved to the new truck. So we will continue to use this utility bed, which is still working, on a new truck body. So I would ask that you approve that this evening.
Moved by Ms. Stanton, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky. Any discussion?
I have a question. Is there a reason why we're going off to 2022 versus maybe another, possibly a used, older one, but still on good wheels, so to speak? You know what I'm saying? I mean, I guess I just have a problem with going with the brand new. And when did we do any research on checking on used vehicles?
Right now, used vehicles are going very high, very, very high.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're expensive, and I would say also, if you wanted to last for another 26 years, you start with something new. But.
No, I do appreciate that, Mary. And unfortunately, what's out there, as Tara said, used vehicles are just at a premium, especially with the skyrocketing materials price and with the significant discount that we get for Co-Stars, actually puts this in the range of a, you know, late-model used truck. So it's actually a pretty good deal.
Then on the other side of the coin is, we're lucky to get a new one because I talked to Tim Spangler, who used to have Spangler Motors. He's still working there. He said he only has one. He's still working there. He said he only has one 2022 vehicle on the on his his lot, and that's a Bronco. So he said you just can't get them. So you're lucky to get it. Just just some information I was just thinking.
Yep.
John, does the 1995, will that pass inspection?
Um, if we can drive it, that, like I said, it hasn't been starting recently, so.
Do we have any idea? Well, I mean, I'm not saying that we should invest a lot of money, but I'm just, I just have to ask anything. I mean, do we know what's wrong?
We're we're not 100% certain, but it's, let's put it this way, most of the major systems are failing.
Okay. And then you probably know I'm going to ask this question because I ask it every vehicle if I don't see it. On the list of items, I do not see a camera, knowing just the kind of cutout and the box going on top of it. Is there a camera? I think especially being driven around the district, I say this again, every vehicle. I think that there should be a camera installed just for the safety of little children being behind a lot of blind spots with a big truck with a lot of blind spots. So I didn't see it listed. I mean, I'm sure we can add one, but is that something that is on here? Do you know?
No, I don't believe it is because normally the backup camera would be in the tailgate. But again, the bed is being replaced with the utility bed, but we can, you know, look into getting an aftermarket camera or asking the good folks at Sunbury Motors if they can get one on there for us. So we'd be happy to add one.
I just, again, you guys have all sat through van and truck discussions with me. After driven, you know, after having driven a 4350 super duty van, there are a tremendous amount of blind spots, and I know how hard it can be sometimes to back them up. Fortunately, I was never around a lot of little kids. So I it's just something that I would advocate for for a couple extra hundred dollars, you know, for the safety. That's just my personal thought.
We can certainly, if the board approves the quote with to be modified by with a backup camera, I can absolutely get Sunbury Motors to provide us one. That's no problem.
They're really not very expensive.
Now. Is there, who made the motion? Ms. Stanton, I think that was.
I'm happy to amend it to include adding a backup camera.
All right, thank. All right, so modified by Ms. Stanton, seconded by Dr. Jablonski. Again, sorry to be just one of those nitpicky things, but again, it's just something I feel could avoid a very bad situation. So something I feel strongly about. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Paula, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzicker Fisero?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Just to let everybody know, once we replace this truck, there will only be one older remaining vehicle, a 2002 Ford truck, which, again, about 20 years old, we'll be looking at it in the next few years. But after that, our fleet is fully modernized. So hopefully we won't have to come back to this for quite some time.
All right, thanks, John. We'll move on to the Next Century Inc. agreement. Dr. Polachuk?
So this is an agreement with Next Century Incorporated, which is managed by the CSIU. And this is for Pamela Kramer, who's recently retired, to be able to provide transition services to the district with the onboarding of our new Director of People Services and Athletics. They did not have an opportunity to have any transition time prior to Stephanie Beaver joining the district. Pamela would be able to just let Stephanie know specifically about how our particular IP software works, some of our state timelines, things that might be particular to Pennsylvania, and some of the more complex special education IPs that we have. So it'll, the the contract would extend not just through the summer, but into the, I believe it ends in December. I remember that correctly. No, I'm sorry, January. And it's capped at a certain cost. So she would be available as needed if something emerges later on in the fall and into the winter.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzicker Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. And then the next item, policies for first reading. Before us, we have the policies for first reading. Anything, Dr. Polachuk, Dr. Zimmerman, Dr. Jablonski, anything you guys would like to add or draw to our attention?
I would just like to make sure people take a look at policy 006.1, which is the one that we talked about together, a meeting or a couple of meetings ago, appropriately enough, about attendance at meetings by electronic communications. We may, we tweaked the policy, but basically we found that it already captured what we were hoping it would capture. But we, because of the particulars of the pandemic, have not needed to adhere to it as strongly as we hopefully will be able to moving forward. So just people should take a look at that and make sure they're on board with what we chose to do there.
And is that a motion to approve, Virginia?
Second.
Thanks. I'll call you out on that. I assumed it was. Thanks. So moved by Dr. Zimmerman, seconded by Dr. Jablonski. Any discussion? Hearing none. I can do this by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And thank you, Virginia, for pointing that out. We had that discussion about it. So I'm glad to see that's coming back to the board. And then the next item. Sorry, my screen went away. The moving expenses for the Director of People Services and the Athletic Director. Dr. Polachuk?
Consistent with the district's path practice in the past for administrators that we hire that have to move into the district and it's a significant move, meaning out of state or further away, we're asking if the board would reimburse the expenses for the Director of People Services and Athletic Director up to the amount of $5,000 for all documented expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzicker Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. We'll move into board information under new business. The curriculum pilot is the first item. Mrs. Moser?
Thank you. You have the information regarding the curriculum pilot. It's almost every single academic year that some of our faculty step forward asking to pilot some new materials, an idea, a new piece that they would like to add. And I appreciate that our own policy 105 encourages those pilots and then that we share that information with the board. This particular pilot brought forward by the grade three teachers from Kelly Elementary, The Logic of English, is a spelling vocabulary program that they've researched and found. And I think it has two points that mesh well with other district curricular pieces. We've put quite a bit of emphasis in our K to three literacy program on phonemic awareness and a phonics-based approach to early reading instruction. And that's the the structure to this particular spelling and vocabulary program. Secondly, third grade and the beginning of upper elementary, it is an important piece in the continuum of English Language Arts to continue with spelling, but also to transition to vocabulary study. And this is a program that would allow that to happen in grade three. The fact that the seven teachers involved are very excited for the opportunity to work with it, I believe is very important. The idea that they see the fit in our existing curriculum materials and a good addition to those. And while our spelling program in place, K to five, is sentence spelling that we endorsed in 2003, it is certainly time to look at spelling as a component of English Language Arts and vocabulary development. And I was genuinely excited that this group of teachers wanting to take a look at that this year have advanced it as a proposed pilot. So I would ask for the board to understand and support that this evening.
Any questions right now? All right. Thank you, Mrs. Moser. We'll certainly take a look at that. The next item for the information items is the Green Dragon Foundation Field House.
So I just want to make the board aware that the Green Dragon Foundation has formed a steering committee to take a look at the feasibility of raising funds to build the multipurpose building slash field house that would be located on our on our athletic complex. This would consist of a concession stand and restrooms, as well as storage for equipment and some district vehicles such as lawnmowers or anything that we may need for the fields. It's an important project for us because a bathroom would be very nice to have out there and the concession stand, as well as, once we do have that in place, we can address the size of the bleachers that we currently have on the soccer and baseball fields. So just for the board's awareness, they are in the process of determining what what the fundraising strategy would be and the there's really nothing additional to report on that. I'm a part of that steering committee as well, so I will certainly keep the board updated on that progress.
Jen, I have a question about the bleachers at the baseball field. Those were very uncomfortable when I was there at the dedication of the field. Are those going to be there permanently? Or are we going to be getting other ones? Or has there ever, has there been any other complaints about them?
I haven't heard anything specific on that, but as part of, it's the Green Dragon Foundation's project. So they selected all of those materials. We were just limited by the size of the bleachers and how tall they can be. When they can be replaced, if this field house comes to fruition, we'd certainly look for something that's more comfortable for all the spectators.
Any other questions? All right, moving on to the Board President's Report. The only item tonight is just, just an update. I've started reaching out to each board member individually. We traditionally have always done this, you know, kind of December, January timeline to discuss committee assignments and just kind of do a one-on-one update with the board members. I did one, I started doing one about a week ago, just trying to work around my family vacation, a couple of other board members' vacations, just trying to connect as we move into the fall semester, just taking a look at where we're at as a board, giving some updates and so forth. So if I have not gotten to you yet, I'll be reaching out just to have a, you know, quick, I say quick. Some of them have lasted a little bit longer, but just an update and just a discussion on the board's comfort level of certain things, you know, setup of the meetings and everything. So like I said, I appreciate the time that the board members have given so far. I've had some really good discussions, so thank you for that. And I look forward to talking with the rest of you guys. And Mrs. Moser, we'll move on to your report tonight.
Thank you. In lieu of a written report, I'll take just a moment to welcome new staff that we are hiring this evening, our second grade teacher, Mrs. Nikki Bany, and a second grade long-term substitute, Miranda Falver. I also want to call attention and offer recognition and congratulations. Five of our teaching faculty member achieved tenure status here at this point in time for three successful years of effective education in our district. So Mr. Corey Leshar, Ms. Lindsay Hawksworth, Mr. Anthony Caruso, Ms. Alexis Brockway, and Mrs. Lauren Peck will be issued professional contracts. And we're pleased to acknowledge their wonderful contributions to our programs. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Moser. And I believe I see that Ms. Bany is on the meeting tonight. So as Mrs. Moser just said, from the board, I'll speak on behalf of the board. Welcome to the district and thanks for joining us this evening for our meeting. We'll move on to board liaison and committee reports. Are there any reports that anybody would like to give? Hearing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that anybody would like to have removed and voted upon separately? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the revised personnel report?
No.
Moved by Mrs. Brows, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion? Hearing none. Paula, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzicker Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll move on to director's comments. We'll just kind of go across my screen. Dr. Zimmerman, you're you're first on my screen, so I'll call on you. Anything to add tonight?
I would just like to add my congratulations to the tenured teachers and also a very warm welcome to our new teachers, particularly Ms. Bany, who is here.
Thank you. Mrs. Brows?
I like to do what Virginia said, and welcome to all staff. I look forward to hearing good things happening in the district when school starts up in the fall.
Thanks, Mary. Dr. Jablonski?
I'll echo what Virginia and Mary said. Welcome to all the new folks and thank you, Ms. Bany, for sitting in this meeting. They're all like this. Thank you to the Green Dragon Foundation. Thank you to the Green Dragon Foundation for the donations, as always. And I'm I'm actually looking forward to this school year. I know the kids have a few more weeks of summer, but I'm excited for another successful year.
Thanks, Erin. Ms. Stanton, I didn't start with you tonight. Aren't you proud of me?
So noted. Now I have nothing to say. No, just kidding. Thank you to everyone, to all of our new staff. Congratulations to our tenured folks. I'm I'm always amazed at how much work happens over the summer when the halls are empty and everyone's away on vacation or doing whatever it is they're doing. So thank you to our administrators. Thank you to the teachers that I know are working, prepping for next year in many different ways. So grateful for that as well. Thanks.
Thanks, Marion. And Corey, anything to add?
Oh, no, just reiterate the, what everybody said about our new staff and our tenured staff. I will add that, you know, over the years, you have, your vehicle discussions have become less and less animated. I just want to point that out. Everybody that was around that remembers the original one, tonight was nothing. Just, just going to say.
Hey, wait till we have to buy a shed there, Corey.
Hot kettle, kettle pot.
Don't get me started.
I'm in the process of looking for a shed.
I'll give you some names to call, Mary.
Yes, please do. I'm serious. Please do. Because I'm tearing my old grunge down and putting a shed up.
I think the truck discussion was under five minutes, so that was, that's pretty good for us.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I mean, originally, it was like 37 minutes and there were heated mirrors and all. I don't even remember. It was, it was a sight to behold.
There in the room, Jen, Kathy, John, anything to add?
No. Good.
No? All right. We'll move on. John, are there any comments to the board on non-agenda items?
First, did we check in with Dr. Unzicker Fisero, if she had any?
Oh, I did not. Sorry, I skipped over her.
I have nothing to add. I'm sitting in this room, it's been very loud in here. Just thank you to everyone and looking forward to another year. Because I feel like it's better than last year, even though we did a good job, so.
All right. No, there are no comments to the board on non-agenda items.
All right, then I would, I mean.
Well, actually, I'm sorry, yes, there is a question from the media here.
Hi, 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 everybody. Matt Farrand here from the Standard Journal. That's F-A-R-R-A-N-D, and I'm also a district resident, of course. And, and I came all this way to see all of you in person, and I see you up on the screen tonight. I just, I just wonder what's up with that. I was looking to get some fresh photos post-pandemic, but that'll have to wait for another day. Just one non-agenda item for anyone who has Friday afternoon off or would like to have Friday afternoon off. The Standard Journal has a golf tournament planned for tomorrow. It starts at, registration at 12:30 and shotgun start at 1:00 at Winding Brook. That's just a little bit north of Milton. And there isn't, there is a fee to enter, but you get, you know, food and snacks and, you know, drinks, adult and otherwise, and plenty of premiums. So, so you're all, you're all welcome. It's, it's, it's not a public course, but it's, but it's down home. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Stories I heard from the last golf tournament, Matt, you might be talking to the wrong crowd.
I think we had a lot of fun. All right.
I don't doubt that. I was just talking about golf.
With that, anything else? I would entertain a motion, if not, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Brous, second by Dr. Jablonski. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carried, meeting adjourned.